Water treatment and solid waste systems and structures and facilities essential to serve our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in the United States of America to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest in and understand the importance of public works and the public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff the Oregon City Public Works Department is materially influenced by the people's understanding of the importance of the work they perform. And whereas National Public Works Week was instituted in 1960 by the American Public Works Association to call attention to the importance of public works in community life, and the United States Senate passed a resolution affirming the first National Public Works Week. And whereas Kate Brown, Governor of Oregon, has signed a proclamation declaring May 15th to 21st, 2016, to be National Public Works Week. And whereas the year 2016 marks the 56th Annual National Public Works Week, and it should be recognized as Public Works Always There. Therefore, I, Dan Holliday, Mayor of Oregon City, do proclaim the week of May 15th to 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in Oregon City. You're welcome, sir. Pass that down. So next we have Metro Update. My friend, Councilor Collette. You have a presentation.
This doesn't keep thinking your mics move. Do I have to push anything? Is this on? The clicker is on. And this is on.
Is the red light on?
Yes.
Yes, then it's on.
Ours are the opposite. If the red light is on, it means it's off.
Oh.
What kind of sense is that? Totally counterintuitive. I heard that. Well, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. It is always a pleasure to be here in Oregon City. And I was looking at your agenda tonight, and we have a whole lot of things that we're working on together. So some of this update is actually going to be a little redundant for you because you're engaged in a lot of what's happening in District 2. A lot of what's happening in District 2. Some of the best is happening here. So I'm very excited. And as I said last, at our last council meeting, I couldn't be prouder of District 2. I think it's the most beautiful place in the region, and I know you know that. So I'm gonna, let's see. No, that didn't do it. Which, what do I hit? The advance isn't doing it. Left button? Nope. That button? The red button. That's the eject button, right? Okay. Was that you or me? That was me? Okay. So I have a number of things to update you on, and now it's going to keep going. So the obvious first one that you are familiar with is the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. A lot has happened. That open house a couple of weeks ago here, I think it blew everybody out of the room. We were so excited. We had over 725 people. That's more than we've had at events in downtown Portland that are sponsored by the Art Museum and others. So we could be very, very proud. Clearly, and it wasn't just people from Oregon City, it was people from all over the region. This is a project that has everybody's attention. Everybody is really excited about it. The design work is moving forward. You're, I think, going to be signing or approving hopefully some agreements tonight on some of the design work. Also tonight, you're going to be, I think you're the last to vote on the IGA among all of the partners. So Metro Council approved it in Oregon City at our last council meeting. So we hope to move forward on that. And the rediscovered the Falls Friends Group, we have now got a, well, we aren't seated yet, but we did have a selection committee that did choose members for the board. I can, I don't know, I mean, I do know, and I think we've notified now all the members of the board, so I think I can say at least one thing I know for certain is they said they would prefer not to have any currently elected people on the board. So even though I'm the current chair and was the founder, I'm not on the board in the future, but I will certainly stay engaged with the group. We do have a really amazing board. I couldn't be more excited about the people who will be working with us to fundraise, to lead this project from the community side, to be the supportive group to the government partners group. Okay? Another big project that starts here in Oregon City and goes all the way up to the Milwaukee North Industrial Area is the grant that we've applied for from the EPA. This is the largest grant available from EPA. It's a $600,000 area assessment grant. And the idea is that we will be looking at the entire McLaughlin Corridor to try to decide where are the brownfields that we can clean up and put back in business. We want to be creating jobs, and there's a lot, I mean, all of us know of places along the McLaughlin Corridor that could be real job makers, and this grant will help us identify those. We'll hear about that this spring. And in the meantime, we did issue a number of local development grants that Oregon City got one, Gladstone got one, Milwaukee, Ford the North Industrial got one as well. You got tonight the two most recent regional snapshots. This is something that Metro was asked by MPAC, our Metro Policy Advisory Committee, to report back to the region a little more often about what's the status? Where are we in the region? And so we have done them now on housing and jobs, and the one that just came out this week is on transportation. And that's one of the ones that I handed out to you. The idea is we have a one-pager, but we also have a very full and active website on each of these snapshots, and I would encourage you to go check it out because there's a ton of data. It's pretty interactive. And the URL for it is oregonmetro.gov/. Doesn't, it's hard to read, but it says snapshot. Couple of big projects in the region that are not in District 2, but are, this one is actually, has a little bit of District 2. It's the Sylvania Campus is in District 2. But this is the southwest corridor, likely to be a light rail project that will go from downtown Portland out through Tigard and up, out to Bridgeport Village. And so that's the project that they're in the, right now, in the decision-making part of. They're still not sure about how to reach Sylvania. I think that it's very likely that a tunnel, a light rail tunnel to Sylvania will come off the table. It really doesn't pencil out.
I thought it already had.
Pardon?
Thought they...
Well, that's what the staff recommendation was.
Okay.
Yeah. And then I think they're also leaning towards light rail because bus rapid transit would be not as effective in that area. It's very expensive, but the bus rapid transit is just, it wouldn't serve as well because it's, has to deal with, most of the time it'll be in traffic anyway, so.
Would that connect with Wes?
It won't here. There is a way that we can connect it in the future, but I think right now, I'm, now you've got me thinking. I could find out, because I know Wes does go through Tigard, so it'll be very close to Wes. If not, I'm, maybe I'm, maybe it does, actually, in Tigard. I'll find out. This, I'm not on the steering committee for this, so I haven't been following every single detail until Sylvania became the most controversial part of it, and that's the part that's in my district, so I had to engage on the Sylvania issue. Oops, I hope I don't. So this Friday is, is that tomorrow? Is it already that late in the week?
Tomorrow's Thursday.
Tomorrow's Thursday, okay. Then Friday, I have no idea. This has been an intense week, probably for everybody. Friday is our first regional leadership forum on the regional transportation plan. And our hope at this is that we'll have both JPAC, the Joint Policy Advisory Committee on Transportation, members there, as well as the MPAC, Metro Policy Advisory Committee members, and any of you who want to come. I think it's really important to have as many of the local elected leaders as we can. There are also a number of business leaders who've been invited, and a number of community leaders from various nonprofit groups. And the idea is that this is a meeting where we want to kind of, what are the big dreams? What are our dreams for the, for the region? How do we want our transportation system to operate in the next 20 years? There'll be two more forums coming up in 2016 as we move into this regional transportation planning process. It's, it's a long process. It takes about four years, and then we start the next one. Every four years, we have to do a new one, so it's kind of ongoing. We are also in the process of, right now, of deciding what to do with the regional flexible funds, and that's the money that is allocated to local communities through grants that they apply for. There's been a very intense discussion at sort of the uber level of what are we, do we want to maybe bond some for the next light rail projects? We're currently paying off the last bonds for the orange line and the green line. Do we want to set aside some money for the kinds of programs that we do regionally? We do set that money aside. And then how do we distribute what's left between freight and active transportation complete streets? So that's been a pretty intense conversation. I'm glad I'm not chairing JPAC because tomorrow, I think, is the, the point where they're going to be deciding on not the exact dollar figures for any projects, but what are the big overlying themes? What are the policy decisions that they need to make in order to start then looking at the, how to, how to distribute the actual dollars? So that will happen tomorrow unless it gets delayed, and then we move into the grant application and distribution of funds process. Metro has now created a new program around equitable housing. We all know that affordable housing is a huge issue for everybody in the region. We've created a new grant program. We've put half a million dollars into this budget, and we'll be taking applications for grants to do, mostly it's about planning, pilots, innovative ways to address affordable housing and equitable housing. As it says there, there'll be a pre-application meeting on May 13th. If you think you might be interested as a city, you might want to send somebody to that meeting and learn about what, we're just creating the program. So we're also seeking advice on what kinds of projects you think we ought to be funding with that amount of money. We're still working on the solid waste roadmap with the conclusion date of 2019. We are, right now, we're in conversations with Covanta in Marion County to talk about can we bring some of our garbage to them to get electricity out of it? We're also looking at ways to get more recyclables out of the waste stream so that we're not hauling, you know, 100, well, actually, a million tons of garbage to eastern Oregon every year. We pride ourselves as a region on being really good at recycling. We are probably the best region in, in the country in cycling.
Answer a question for me. The Covanta plant, that has gotten a DEQ, a state DEQ permit?
Oh, it's, yeah.
And they're, they have no issues with air pollution or anything like that?
Well, they have been permitted. I think that we're looking very closely at what that means. They have had no issues in the last permitting process that they went through. They were, I don't think it was even appealed. It had been previously. But it's one of the cleanest operating plants in the country, if not, I think it is one of the cleanest, maybe the cleanest. So we're pretty excited to be partnering with them if we decide to go in that direction. We're going to be taking a lot of public feedback, and we're hearing from all sides. I think we did some, actually, some polling, which was funny in that most people assume that we are hauling our garbage to Boardman to burn for electricity. Most people automatically assume that. And most people think if we're hauling it to a landfill, that's a really bad choice. So we, you know, but then you come down to, yes, but would you, would you be willing to have your garbage go to Marion County to be burned, where they've been doing it for at least 20 years? I'm, I'm pretty sure they've been doing it that long. Do you know if that, oh. Yeah. It's been a long time. It's a really highly functioning plant.
What technology are they using?
It's pretty straightforward. It's garbage burning.
Well, no, it's actually not straightforward because I've been doing some studying.
Well, it's not the plasma high-end, the, the really expensive stuff that they're doing in your...
So the fluidized sand bed, or?
No, you got me. I don't know. I've been down there. I've toured the plant, and I've toured a lot of waste-to-energy plants around the country, but I don't know which particular technology they're doing. I know it goes into a big burner. And out comes, I think, 13 megawatts of electricity, so. And they, they would need, you know, a specific amount of garbage from us, which we can easily supply. It would only be about 20% of our garbage. Some people are saying, oh, well, you won't recycle if you think it's going to go to, to generate electricity. 20% is a significant number, but it's not half or anywhere near all of the garbage we generate in the region. So we're looking at it very seriously. And we're also looking at trying to divert more food scraps from the waste stream, because right now, the, the food garbage is a significant amount of what we take to the landfill. It's heavy, it's wet, it has more problems than almost anything else we bring to the landfill, and it's the easiest to divert and compost. I mean, there, the technologies are pretty simple for getting either compost, which is, would be loved by the nursery community in the state, or there are some waste-to-energy things that we could be doing with food scraps that are like dry anaerobic digesting, which I did also tour a plant that's doing that, so I'm more familiar with that one, actually. So we are looking at how can we get much more food out of the garbage stream. And then the south transfer station, I think you probably know as much as we do, we are looking at how do we reconfigure the site, and that, we'll be talking more with you about as we move forward on that.
Before we leave Trash Mayor, it was opened in 1987, and it uses a, two, two water wall furnaces.
Okay.
Oh, right. Water wall?
Water wall, yeah.
See, well, that's why I did...
Counterintuitive, but...
Yeah, yeah. Thanks.
There's probably quite a bit of pollution that comes off of that, though.
No, actually, there's not.
Well, no, it's really quite clean.
Once you get, once you get above 2,000 degrees, or reach 2,000 degrees, the molecular structures break apart. And so you have to be at least above 1,500 degrees to not produce...
Dioxins.
Dioxins, yeah, there you go. So once you get above 2,000 degrees, as long as you filter it, get the dust particles and the heavy metals out, which I'm sure they have a process to do, then it, typically, they don't generate much in, in the form of air pollution.
So steam, maybe?
Yeah.
Steam is, yeah. I've seen the steam coming off. But there are plants now all around the world. Stockholm has one right downtown, and you wouldn't know it's even there. I mean, it's, they, it's an amazing integrated system. It's a whole nother slide presentation. I'm very, I was very impressed with their facility, and it's fairly old technology.
Solid waste? I don't know.
We are also looking at different approaches to some of the urban growth management decisions that we make. This was something that we also promised MPAC we would do as part of our last regional growth boundary decision. And I do have the list now of the task force that, that President Hughes has convened, if you're interested in that. It's Forest Grove Mayor Pete Truax, Gresham Mayor Shane Bemis, Happy Valley Mayor Lori DeRimer, Milwaukee Mayor Mark Gambah, Sherwood Mayor Chrisana Clark, someone from the city of Portland, we don't know who exactly yet, Troutdale Mayor Doug Douse, Twolleton Mayor Lou Ogden, Wilsonville Mayor Tim Knapp, Clackamas County Chair Ludlow, Washington County Chair Dyke, Carrie McLaren from OL, no, OCD...
DLCD.
Thank you. DLCD. Jason Miner from 1,000 Friends, someone from Home Builders, and then me, Sam Chase, and President Hughes from the Metro Council. So we will be looking at, are there ways that we could be doing some things like incremental growth boundary extensions that may not be entirely dependent on just population numbers or need?
So Multnomah County wasn't included because they're landlocked at this point?
I think that's it, yeah. I think there's cities that were on the edge, were, were involved, but not so much. I was wondering about that myself, why isn't there a Multnomah County? I think it's partly because when we did the urban reserves process, they said pretty loud and clear, we don't want to do land growth, urban growth boundary decisions anymore. It was a really intense political process, as I certainly know from experience. As you know, the Community Enhancement Grants Program here in Oregon City doubles this year, so we expect to have about 210,000 available for projects. I'm really excited about that. Those of you, we all sit on that committee, and it's always hard when you don't have enough money to go around. It's way easier when you can say, we love all these projects, and yes, we can actually fund them. So the, again, the deadline for these applications is May 27th, and then we will all meet and make those decisions about who gets those, those enhancement grants. This year, Metro adopted a Parks and Nature System Plan. And, oops. And one of the things that it primarily does, well, I'll go back to here, is it talks about kind of what is Metro's parks role vis a vis the other park providers? Like, Canema's a great example. The Canema Children's Park, that's an active children's park. It's a playground. That's a city park, and that makes sense for cities to have that kind of park. When you get more into the nature stuff and the trails, Canema, the Bluffs Park, that's, that's more the kind of park that we like to do and are, and will continue to do. So that's where we sort of see our niche. There's also national parks and forests, but really, we're, we're just a little bit different than the city playground parks. Those are really...
So I'm, I'm curious. I know you've, you've been in the, or that Metro has been taking some stuff from the Oregonian, but curious why Metro continues to be so anti-dog when it comes to some of these areas. I know I have some people in, in my constituents who, you know, walk their dogs on the path down by the Cove and other things, and they would be able to use the, the, the new thing that we're doing up in, up in Neal Creek. So what are you going to do to fix that situation?
We're going to maintain the policy, the no dogs policy. The dogs are permitted on any regional trails. They're permitted on boat landings. They're permitted on parks that you manage. You probably have dogs that are allowed on leash. We're actually hearing from some of our other partners that they're going to be doing more and more no dog parks. And the reason is, and I have to tell you, I'm a dog lover. I mean, if I had my way, I'm not sure I'd let people in parks, but I would probably let dogs on leash in parks. Because I just, I mean, I love dogs, and I, I don't have one now, and that drives me nuts that I don't have a dog right now. When I got on Metro, that was one of the things I wanted to take on, was the no, I thought, why in the world do we have a no dog policy? Especially when we're starting to allow bikes, for example, in our parks. There is a ton of research, as it turns out, that says that wildlife don't really mind bikes, or people, or even horses. They, they are through the territory pretty quickly. Dogs are predators, and wildlife view dogs as predators. And where, and that, and that scent of a dog, of a predator stays, lingers on that path and in that park a lot longer than any of these other, and most, actually, most urban wildlife are kind of acclimated to people. They're not acclimated to dogs. And what we've learned, and from experience and also from all the research we've done, is that places where dogs are allowed, wildlife stay further from the trails. A number of birds, especially ground nesting birds, don't even go there. They, they stay out of those areas altogether. So when we went to the voters, we said, we want to set aside parks and natural areas for fish and wildlife habitat and water quality. And dogs are a real detriment to fish and wildlife habitat and water quality. And, and it's, it's been a real tough one for me, because, like I said, I love dogs and would bring dogs everywhere. But at every park, we're trying to make sure that we have signage now that says, dogs are not allowed here, but at all the adjacent parks nearby, you can bring your dogs. And we, we're going to have that map to at least signage that says, here's where you can bring your dogs. So I know it is an issue, obviously, it's gotten, and frankly, the feedback I've gotten has been about 50/50. The phone calls have been mostly negative, mostly, you know, well, you know, you get phone calls.
Not really.
But there have been several phone calls that have been very supportive and that feel that we should maintain the policy. The emails that I've gotten have been pretty, there have been a mix, but they've been close to 50/50. Keep the policy or, you know, drop the policy. So I'm, I'm actually willing to make another run at it. Are there other places where we really don't expect to have the kind of wildlife? But I think the case is pretty strong. It says that, that dogs are a detriment to fish and wildlife habitat and water quality.
And where do these studies come from?
All around the country, and actually, all around the world. But I can, I can get them up on our website and point you to them.
Okay.
But they've done a huge survey of, of data, because I demanded that, frankly.
All right.
One of the things that's in our system plan is this notion of nature hoods. And what we're trying to do is get people to think about where they live, not just in terms of a city or a county, but in terms of the environment, the habitat, the watershed, and the, really, the nature hood. So we have the Clackamas River, we have the greater Willamette Narrows. I live in East Butes-Johnson Creek nature hood, right on the edge of the Clackamas River nature hood. But it's just a way to get people thinking about what their community is from a habitat perspective. And this is all also in the system plan. We're, a pretty significant discussion about what each neighborhood is that's distinct. I also wanted to talk to you about some of the cool stuff going up at Canina, Canema. We hope to have a little bit of a party up there in June, because, I, I mean, we were asked to make a more accessible trail there that would be handicap accessible, and we were asked, because the children's park opened up, could we put a little wall there? Nothing ugly, but a wall that would, at least, we call it the three-year-old wall. It might discourage people from flinging their bodies off of cliffs. And when we met with the neighborhood to, you do what you can, you know? But we met with the neighborhood to approve the plans and the designs for it, and the neighborhood was really excited by the plans. I mean, we had a long and admittedly difficult relationship getting to that design with, with the community around Canema. But I feel really, they seem to really like the design. So I'm, I'm proud of it. I was hiking it one day with some other people, and they said, is this a WPA project? Which, to me, is like, yes. We wanted it to look like it's been there for a long time, and, and I think it does. So hopefully, we'll get you out for a little celebration. We also recently awarded some of the trails grants, and a couple of those came here. The 25,000 to Oregon City for the McLaughlin to Canema Trail Plan, and then another 25,000 to the Oregon School District for trails up at Clackamas Community College, the shared use path. And we are announcing now the availability of the Nature and Neighborhoods Restoration Grants. So we have money to give away for community-based projects that will help nature in neighborhoods. Applications on these are due by May 16th, and there's the contact information. You'll have this slide presentation so you can, if you want to send anybody those notices or that information. We have all been watching the Convention Center Hotel, and we did settle with the, the man that was suing us, and we, we've agreed to not, any, no further litigation, so we can now go into design phase. There's a lot of exciting things about this, one being that it will really bring a lot more conventions to town, but in the meantime, it will also create 3,000 jobs, 2,000 just during the construction, and then 950 union hotel and hospitality jobs. And, and I stress union because one of the things that we demanded of Hyatt as we went into negotiations with them was that this be a union hotel. And there aren't very many of those in, in the city of Portland. Up at the Oregon Zoo, we're very excited that Elephant Land's open. Any of you want to come up there, I'm always open to bring you on tours. And it is, if you haven't seen it, it's amazing. Bill knows all about this, but it is really impressive. And the elephants love it. It is so fun to watch them run around the grounds, especially the, the kids. And we are also now in construction of the zoo education center. That, we have, expect to have a grand opening in 2017. And some pictures. People kept asking, are we going to have a pool up there? And yes, we have a huge pool up there, and particularly Samudra, whose name means water lover, and Lily just love it. They just go nuts in the pool. It's quite fun. Just an update on what's happening at Portland. Five Centers for the Arts, as you know, Metro manages these, all the arts, performing arts centers for the city of Portland. We have the Magic Food coming to Keller. We have Annie, the Broadway show Annie, back at the Keller. Paul Simon is coming to the Schnitzer, May 25th, and Tiempo Libre at the Newmark on June 3rd. And that's my presentation, my update for tonight. Thank you all for having me. And if there are any questions?
I just wanted to congratulate you on that. Canema Bluffs, I took my granddaughter up to the children's park the other day, and, and she noticed the trail, and she's like five.
Oh.
Away we went. And I finally caught her at the cemetery, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
So you had the complete tour.
Yeah, I did. So, but that's really great.
It's beautiful.
My gosh. I don't know if you guys have been up there to it, but it's just...
We were there just a week and a half ago, and the camus was starting to bloom. It was really stunning.
Yeah. And I, the stones with the little sculptures on them are pretty subtle, so I hope you got a chance to look at those. They're, they're, at each of the benches, I think, has, has stones with sculptures. And those were locally, those were hand carved by a local stone guy.
Nice.
Anything else?
I just want to thank you for all your support in our city projects and our regional projects, and really helping to be advocate to carve out those public spaces while we can.
Thank you. It's, it's a pleasure. It's, it really is great. It's great working with Oregon City.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're on to citizen comment. Do we have anybody for citizen comment?
Did you forget something there, Mayor?
Did I?
Clackamas.
Oh, Clackamas Heritage Partners, I apologize.
Yeah.
Nice one. I just didn't see it. Clock's running.
Hello? Am I on?
Yes.
All right, excellent. I'm actually not with Clackamas Heritage Partners, I'm with Clackamas County Tourism. But before they came up and did their annual review and report, I just wanted to provide some comments and some, you know, some appreciation.
You are?
So I am Jim Austin with Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs, yes. And I'm here in my capacity as the visitor information services coordinator for us. I want to express our support and appreciation for Clackamas County Heritage Partners' continued efforts at coming up with new and engaging ways to share heritage with both local partners and people from around the state and beyond. Their innovative programming is helping keep heritage alive and relevant and accessible to a lot of people and so that's a good thing as well. As the Destination Marketing Organization for Clackamas County Tourism, we also very much appreciate the fact that they are on contract with us and do a great job as providing visitor information services for the area. Gail and her staff there, we hear nothing but good things from the visitors who go there. In this capacity, they serve, you know, Clackamas County and the entire region well. So we really appreciate that. And I'd also like to note that having the visitor center, because it's really the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center, but it houses the state welcome center as well. And we think this is a great partnership. You know, they're complementary. People show up to get visitor information and they just came here because they thought it was a state welcome center. And they're like, oh my God, it's the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretive Center. And all of a sudden, they're going to the interpretive center where they come to the interpretive center because they're here on vacation and they leave with a bunch of information about a house to round out their trip while they're here. So we think this is a great relationship. And to this point, I'd like to thank city of Oregon City for keeping the site open and accessible and welcome and very attractive. We find this to be a mutually beneficial, complimentary arrangement and we hope that you do as well. And, you know, since they're doing the annual report, usually, you know, when things are going really well, nobody ever comes up and says anything. And it's like, no, I wanted to take this opportunity to come up and thank everybody, Clackamas Heritage Partners and the city for their partnership and bringing this all together, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Dan Fowler, I'm the current chair of Clackamas Heritage Partners. And I wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come here tonight and express our appreciation also with the city and the partnership we have in working and improving at the end of the Oregon Trail. I wanted to give you some statistics and then Gail will walk you through a short PowerPoint presentation. But the interpretive center is doing really well and I appreciate Jim's comments as to the extent of the programming and creativity and things are improving. But some of the numbers, just for you and the public that might listen, this is a comparison between 2014 and 2015. Our retail sales were up 48%, a little more than 48%. Our group admissions, which includes school groups, was up 130%. And our general admissions were up 45%. And it just, it was a phenomenal year. And we didn't want to rest on our laurels, so I'll give you a sneak preview of actually now what's happening between 2016 and the first quarter versus 2015. And this first quarter was really a record quarter for us again, with our retail sales were up 51% over the numbers, the first quarter that were included in those yearly numbers that I just read. Our group admissions are up 49% over last year and our general admission is up 29% over last year. So people are coming, they're enjoying the variety that we have and things are going well. And I just want to extend a couple of thank yous. One, I want to thank Gail. She does a phenomenal job. And I tell you, one of the things that I think she's really, she's skilled at a lot of things, but she has hired and trained and motivated a great group of people that really, it really comes across to the visitors. It's just, it's phenomenal. And I don't want to end speaking without extending a thank you to Scott Archer. He's not going to be around long and I've known him a long time, but I wanted to thank him publicly for the support that he has extended to us via the city and for his leadership in that capacity. So thank you, Scott.
Gail?
Yes, I wanted to add to these numbers. What makes these numbers so important also?
Excellent.
What makes them important?
There you go.
Okay. Is that these numbers reflect substantial expenses in, Dan is right, we have phenomenal help. And we're trying to come up to the $15 minimum wage and some of those aspects and reinvest some of the money in programs and projects that we can. In 2015, we spent money on more candle dipping stations so that we could take and candle dip for 20 children at a time versus eight. So those numbers, I think, are pretty good in spite of all that investment.
One of the things I've challenged Gail on to the board, and we have a phenomenal board too, that I've challenged Gail on, is to be prepared. And we have our eye on a much bigger tourist attraction and a much bigger tourist activity that's coming to Oregon City. And we know it's a few years away and yet in our mindset, we are trying to think about ways of sequencing larger groups, of having more people there. And we, our goal is, you know, what would we do if we had 100,000 people? What if 10% of the people that come to the Willamette Falls came to the end of the Oregon Trail over a yearly basis? How would we sequence? How would we queue those in? And they've really met the challenge. And we will be prepared. We are prepared and we'll be, continue to be prepared.
We will be.
Okay, cool.
Okay. Is it the center button?
There should be arrows on the, just have to push hard on the.
On the red one?
Arrow.
The right arrow. Oh, okay. Okay, visitor center. Okay, so we're the state and county welcome center. And we have, the photo shows a map table, brochures. Travel Oregon has a brochure program, plus then we have local brochures and everybody in town can bring their brochures and we pass them out. You're looking at the TV that shows all the events and around town so, you know, people can see where to go next. And the locals, you can see Jackie's Farmer's Market flyer on the right. Then there's also in the state too, because then in the different counties, Clackamas County, Oregon City, Clackamas County, and then the state. That's kind of how we try to balance it. And so there's the Tulip Farm and Wooden Shoe. So when they come into the visitor center and they want directions, we have a slideshow for Oregon City attractions, we can show them. And then, of course, the retail store, we have lots of local products. We have new Happy Rock Coffee, Jim Anderson carvings, Tony's Fish, and an array of books. And what's really nice now is, and of course, that's all new, but then we have, Bruce Hanson does the wood carvings and so.
A local visitor.
Yeah, all local.
Why don't you hand me that one? I'll click it for you.
Okay. Want me to go faster?
I'll move you along.
I know, I know. Okay.
Fuck it.
As far as admission, we've spent a lot of time this year, this first quarter, looking at Dan's challenge. We've added a lot of school groups that would take on multiple school groups in a day and developing the Westward Adventure, which I'll talk about later. But some of the considerations is, we're visitor center and visitors are willing to pay the admission. However, the locals want a free museum. So how do we meet everybody's needs? So we are able now through working with Maureen at the library, the cultural pass, so we can offer that and that's free. Then for an inexpensive way to do groups, we started the virtual tour via Skype. So it's an inexpensive option for school groups because they pay a flat fee for a half an hour or an hour presentation. And you can see Bob up there, Bob Hill. So that is our very first Skype. And it was from a school group in Indiana. So it's really exciting. But then we also had someone in North Portland too. So it's taking off. We've done a few. Then we've added different options for the locals with family passes and adult passes, senior facility paths that we just came up with the other day and sold our first one today. So with that, with those passes, it's reciprocal benefits from other heritage sites and 10% off in retail. Okay, exhibit improvements. We have more artifacts on display and more signage to improve storytelling of the exhibit. And then activities, we have genealogy research, medicine, you can smell pungent herbal medicine and used mortar and pestle calligraphy. Do you know how many people don't know how to read cursive? So we are going back to the quill and we're learning cursive.
Unfortunately, Rocky does.
We have journals, rag dolls, the land serving activity. And actually, the land serving, survey activity is called because Jim Tompkins came over and helped our interpreter, John Jarvey, work on this a couple of years ago. Because again, we were trying to get an activity that we could do with school groups that would do 30, 40 children at a time out on the lawn. So they're out too. And so Jim Tompkins says, oh, the kids don't really like that very much. But John says, well, let's just try it. Anyway, they, they love it. So it's kind of fun. You forgot the Chinook.
No, you did. I moved.
Okay. History talks, all right. History talks utilizing unique talents of all the volunteers and staff to diversify the information. We have weekly demonstrations, this we just started. Because self-guided wasn't totally working. We had a lot of TripAdvisor's critiques that were kind of negative. And so now we're balancing things. And we have someone that does leather working, we have some women that do crocheting, we have people coming in from the community. Susan from Greenkey is now going to do spinning for us and so it's kind of fun. You have to back up though. I want to tell you one thing about Jeff. We have incredible volunteers and staff, but Jeff, his, he loves Ezra Meeker, so that's what he talks about. Bob Hill and Doug Neely do a little skit on, you know, George Abernathy and Dr. McLaughlin. So it's kind of fun.
You can guess who's who.
Yeah, you know who's who. Okay. This is what we really want to talk about, our Westward Adventure Interpretive Trail. We are so excited about this because, first of all, the concept, Rocky, came from you. Rocky had, he and I were talking about programming about three years ago and we walked around the back and he told me his vision. Well, then it started with, the city said it was going to cost $500,000 for siding. We need new siding on the buildings. So then I thought, ooh, I can get money for murals, but I can't get it for building improvements. So then we were thinking, we'll do an Oregon Trail. And then, of course, the visitor, tourist part of me thought, you know, we can market to Oregon City and then the locals, the Clackamas County, and then also the national sites along the trail and international, the immigrants. So that's what this is all about. And we tested it out for the Westward Adventure for the school groups because like Dan says, we can do, now Friday, we have 111 kids coming to this. And we've been spending money from the money we're earning, we have 700 children coming for this. And it's the most expensive package and they're very, very happy. And so it's just, we recently, with the money, we started with signage and then we're working with Jerry Herman. He also got very excited about this program. And he was writing a grant for the Oregon Youth Conservation Corps, which he did get awarded. And he is going to, we're one of three of his projects for this summer, so he has labor from that grant that he'll help with this Oregon Trail. And we're just very excited about it. It's brought a lot of people together. We had, oh gosh, John Salisbury came out because he wants to go back to lowering the wagon. And so we're working with confederated tribes because we're thinking, don't tell anybody, but a totem pole. I mean, there's just lots of ways to connect and bring people together through this project.
Let me add just one thing about this trail. It was part of the challenge to have groups not only inside but outside because you can queue them up and you can do more activities that way. But also this trail in a walk will replicate from Independence, Missouri to Oregon City. So that's, this depiction of the buffalo scene is a scene along the trail where they'll talk about the buffalo. So they go by Chimney Rock, they go by different land points outside on this trail that will be, in a sense, a small, small miniature of the Oregon Trail. And so we're telling the whole story of the trail, but they end up here in Oregon City. But it's on the backside, it utilizes part of the.
Let me ask you a question, Danny. You're not going to like it, but I got to ask it.
Yeah.
How tall is that, this banner thing?
Oh, that's sort of the fence underneath, how tall is it?
It's, I would say probably 10 to 12 feet.
Tall?
Tall. It's big.
So.
Yeah. And about 40 feet long.
I have to ask the next question. Did, was there a permit for that?
Do we need a permit?
We got it approved.
No, it's on the back underside of, is this working? It's on the back underside of the building. It's not, it's not facing to the street or anything like that. And it's, it's more like a mural underneath a deck than it is a sign.
What it is, it's on vinyl? It's a banner?
Well, Dan, we can take it down too. It's zip tied.
No, that's not, that's not the point I was getting at. We just did a thing a few months ago about murals specifically.
What's the banner?
It's really not a mural, Dan. This is a piece of vinyl banner material that is attached to a chain link fence. It's vinyl, it's a vinyl banner.
It's temporary.
With a picture on it.
I just want to be, we have to be careful that we are following our own rules.
I'll follow up on, that's a good question and very much a fair one. I'll follow up and ensure that we're compliant with our own rules.
I agree.
Yeah.
So when do you see this trail being completed?
Completed? Well, first phase, I think this year. And you're going to see quite a bit. Now, some of the bigger plans, and we have a lot of plans, they're going to, you know, continually be, we're using it now. Right now, we have two wagons and a canoe and so we are using the trail. And we have plans, Jerry is working and actually, we're working with Scott on some other elements of this.
Is the trail intended to be self-guided or would there be interpreters taking?
Okay, well, that's a good question because, oh, I'm glad you reminded me this.
Yes and yes.
Yes and yes, because the other criteria to a lot of our programming is for free and with fee, for fee. So we have 24/7 signage all around the site now. And so that would always be accessible. And then, then we do the school groups, they're all guided. But also then, when we get all these 500 people going through the center, we will have interpreters taking people around too. So one will, before I go into events, can kind of read that on their own. Because I want to say what I feel this year with our annual meeting, what, we have two fiscal funding partners and that's the city and the county, Mount Hood Territory. And we had this meeting and it was kind of a miracle because four city staff came to our annual meeting and we sat around talking about what everybody needed from us and we met with Jim too. And what we can do, you know, our collaborative objectives. And this project was unanimous. Everybody thought we should go forward trying to get more people and the visitor information. But it was a dream come true for us to work with the city and the county and, I don't know, I just think that's very important.
Okay, one more.
Okay.
I guess that's it.
This is it. So we have lots of partners. So we have lots of partnerships, Heartstrings comes on a regular basis, Master Gardeners, we have lots of local authors, we have new authors that are reaching out to us now, we have lots of community events as well, movie nights, second Friday of the month morning does the library, Oregon City Library. We have beer cider service available for private parties and also for sale in the retail. And we have workshops using our active vote system, and we have Clackamas River Basin Council that's used it now, they'll be using it for the second year in a row, so it's kind of neat. We have Oregon City Planning Meeting coming up, and then, of course, we have Concerts in the Park, Three Rivers Art Fair coming up, Oregon City Chamber Event, and a Portland Growler.
Yeah.
So...
This year, in our budget, we are actually doing a set aside off of every ticket into a maintenance fund to use to match on projects.
And we're going to work out some more of those details, too, before Scott leaves.
How many employees do you have, Denver?
I'm sorry?
Employees.
How many employees, Tim?
Okay. Other questions?
Just a quick comment, I just appreciate how you just keep improving, and you did really well last year, but that's, you're not going to stay on that, you just keep improving and evolving and keeping it fresh, and that's really what's going to keep it, you know, relevant and successful and stay open, so thank you.
We will.
Thank you, keeps us...
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Real quickly, I'd be remiss if I didn't also express my appreciation for, for Dan and Gail and for all of their folks, their staff, their volunteers, the board members of Clackamas Heritage Partners. Just a few, not too many years ago, we were struggling mightily with the decision of what to do with the site when it closed, and we had to kind of sit and, and the city really had to make some difficult choices or, you know, decisions. And if not for, and, and at the time, of course, the commission's decision was, we want to operate the end of the Oregon Trail site, we want to operate the center. If not for the, the heritage partners with, you know, their volunteers and Gail kind of is really, is just an amazing person leading their staff, if not for the, the heritage partners, we really wouldn't have the ability as a city financially, resources, staffing, et cetera, to run that site. And so it, I just, you know, I really want to express my appreciation for all the work that especially these two have done with both of their leadership, but, but their whole organization, and, and the commission for continuing to support that effort, because it was, you know, we had to kind of get things back up and running again, and from the staff perspective, it's a good partnership, it's going well, these folks are working really hard to continue to make good on the, on the agreement that they have with the city and to, to make it a viable and busy and great place to have.
We're very grateful for everybody's partnership.
Are those employees, city employees?
No.
Okay.
No, we contract...
And that's one of the beauties.
Yeah, we contract the management of the site to them, and they, they operate.
All right, thank you, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, do we have any citizen comments?
We do not.
So one last chance for those in the audience who have something to say. Okay, then we'll move on. Everybody okay with the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, then we're going to move on to general business, PC 16-044, Community Planning and Development Grant, Intergovernmental Agreement between Metro and City of Oregon City for the Lamont Falls Legacy Project Development Strategy. Mr. Conkle.
Thank you, Mayor, evening, commissioners. Tonight, we actually have four items under general business related to the Lamont Falls Legacy Project as well as the Riverwalk. So Ms. Christina Robertson Gardner will be giving the presentation tonight, she's going to give a presentation on all four, but we are asking that you vote on them separately. So feel free to ask any questions as we go through this as it relates to those four consecutive agenda items before you tonight.
Thank you, City Manager Conkle, Mayor Holliday, commissioners. This is an update of previous presentations I've given, also none of this information new, you just now have all the final versions of what you've been seeing as updates over the last couple of months. So the basis of a lot of what we're doing tonight is moving forward on the development strategy. This is really looking at the master plan and the development approach for the private property in cooperation with Falls Legacy LLC. We have a consultant budget of $900,000, 50% of that is public money and 50% of that is private money. It's quite a unique approach, and it's a true public-private partnership. While Oregon City will hold the, the main contract you'll be approving tonight, the project management team is made up of myself, Oregon City staff on behalf of the Legacy Project and the partners, and Falls Legacy LLC, so we'll be making decisions together. And that's how we are going to be moving forward with the strategy that works both for the public but also the private. Why are we doing this? With this amazing Riverwalk design that's moving forward, we need to make sure that we are also having the same amount of effort on the upland portion, on the Main Street side. So doing it the same year with the same consultant team, we can truly integrate that design and strategy. It'll help us with the public implementation plan that, that the fiscal plan of how public money will be used and the contingencies that will be required by the public, the private sector for that. As always, removing, and removing development barriers, we're incentivizing development interests for future interests that want to come in, and having a public involvement, we retain accountability, transparency, and we can keep it within the very successful Lamont Falls Legacy process that we've created. So tonight, what you have in front of you is the Intergovernmental Agreement with Metro for the Community Planning and Development Grant money. That was the grant that was awarded in the fall, so this is the official IGA with the specific deliverables. The CPDD grant program is a deliverable base, so you meet a specific milestone, you get a certain amount of disbursement money. So in, in that packet, you'll see the exhibit that identifies those milestones, and they're all linked up with the grant agreement and the scope. The next item is the grant agreement with Falls Legacy, that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of how the public and the private will move forward and make the joint decisions, how private money will flow into this project. And by signing this tonight, it really allows the project management team to move forward on day-to-day decision-making. The next is the contract with Snoheta, that is the prime for the design collective that is doing the Riverwalk. The majority of this, the development strategy is under Snoheta, though there are some outstanding contracts that we still need to move forward on. And those are a contract with the Falls Legacy LLC will be looking at a market study consultant, will be looking at a consultant for a public implementation plan as, as we move on to this process. And I want to announce that the transportation demand management and parking plan update was just awarded to Rick Williams Consulting today, so you'll be seeing that in the next coming months, and that, that will be also inside the Metro IGA but not underneath Snoheta. And lastly, the City Commission did approve the Governance IGA in, in January, but I, there were some small changes made at the state level, they weren't any substantive changes, but for abundance of caution, as Mr. Kobayashi always uses, we're just bringing it back. And so in your packet, there is a redlined version, you can just see the, the changes that were made. And so this, with this, the City Commission will just be able to sign the version that both Clackamas County, the state, and Metro previously signed. Coming up next month, we have the last two IGAs. We have, as part of our IGA, we've, we've agreed to move forward Oregon City funds to Riverwalk design and construction, so that will be identified next month, as well as the IGA to hand off the Clackamas County match money for the CPDD grant. And, oops, excuse me, I want to end with this slide because we talk a lot about the Riverwalk, and we show beautiful pictures of the falls, and I wanted to show Main Street because this is a really, really complicated thing we're doing, which is, we have a site that the market is not there for a private development to do all the full development and infrastructure. And so this is really how do we crack that nut of understanding the true costs, but then understanding what is that development approach that will help us phase and build this, so. And so hopefully, one day, this picture will be a lot different.
Okay.
I'm here if anybody has any questions.
I, I do have a question. As part of the deliverable, would there also be design standards, or is that in a future?
That's a really great question. Actually, the Planning Commission as part of the master plan that re-zoned the site created narrative design standards, and right now, all new construction still goes to the Planning Commission, so a detailed development plan normally stays at a staff level of the type-two decision, but when we re-zoned the site, because, you know, we had that balance of certainty and flexibility, and flexibility was really big, so they said, right now, all new construction will still come back to them, and they have this narrative design standard. As we move forward in the development strategy, we probably won't get what you think of as a traditional master plan because we don't know exactly what development's coming in, and so we're going to be doing test fits. So we'll be looking at what does a four-story, I'm using, we don't know exactly what they do, but for example, what a four-story apartment building look like? What does an adaptive reuse of number four paper machine, how much does that cost? What would a hotel? So well, you'll see kind of examples of buildings and kind of that cube analysis, and there might be some pretty skin on the outside, but it's not a design, we're not creating design standards, because those still kind of exist in the master, I mean, the rezone, and that's really back up to the Planning Commission to discuss that. That's a really good question.
Any else?
So are we going to talk about these individually, or was that just kind of an overall?
No, we're going to, we're going to talk about them and vote them individually.
Yeah, I think it's a presenting of the whole package, but then I think individual votes.
All right.
So, does anybody have anything to talk about as far as this particular item? The Community Planning Development Grant?
So this is the agreement for the Community Planning Development Grant, grant that we received, so this includes the deliverables, the phasing, and how we would be reimbursed once we reach each of those milestones with Metro.
And that's a budget of $1,500,000?
Yeah, that includes administrative costs for myself.
Okay.
Can you talk a little bit about how the parking study for this integrates with the Main Street parking efforts?
Yes. Where's Eric? Where's Eric? We were, we were able to work with Eric and Economic Development to help Main Street update their 2009 parking study counts. If you recall, in 2009, we didn't have a lot of, like restaurants, for example, for after-hours visitors, so it's not going to be a full revamp, but it's going to be new data. And so Main Street will be working with Rick Williams on providing a new, us new data this next month, with the understanding that's going to help us as we move forward in that kind of the larger analysis this summer. Along with, and you'll see the scope, but along with Mr. Williams' contract, there will be public engagement, especially strategic stakeholder engagement of Main Street and the neighborhoods that are really abutting the project.
Okay, thank you.
Motion?
I would like to move to approve the Community Planning and Development Grant Intergovernmental Agreement.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Is there any further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. So next on the list is the PC 16-047 Memorandum of Understanding and Development Strategy Grant between Oregon City and Falls Legacy LLC. Does anyone have any questions or discussion about this?
I had one, but I can't get to the document here, but I noticed there was like, there's like $850,000 figure there, and then there's, but the budget number's $25,000.
The, this is for the Snoheta contract?
Uh, this is for item two, I don't think we've gone to this Snoheta one yet, have we?
No, this is...
16-047 is the second one, Christina.
For the Falls Legacy.
Yeah, 7B. I think that's, or maybe, maybe I saw that in 7C, excuse me.
Yeah, I don't see...
That's the Snoheta one, 7C.
Yeah, and I can, I can refer to that when we get to that.
Okay, wait on that one.
Yeah, I didn't see any numbers in that one. Okay.
Move to approve PC 16-047.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Mengeberg, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, PC 16-045, Personal Service Agreement with Snoheta to provide consultant services for the Lamont Falls Legacy Project Development Strategy. Now, you can answer Commissioner Shaw's question.
This, this is a, a kind of our approach on how to move forward when there's still not every understanding of some subs contracts, so what, what we're asking is, Oregon City is actually putting $25,000 into this project, the rest is coming from Clackamas County in the grant, so that's where the $25,000 is coming from. We're also asking the City Commission to approve Snoheta's contract to kind of the full extent of that, that could potentially be under them. Some additional sub consultants may be contracted out through Falls Legacy or through Oregon City as like an RFP, but some may stay under as sub consultants, so what we'd like to do is ask to the full extent, so I don't have to come back here, because we only asked for a certain amount. So we have $900,000 of consultant services, and we know the most that would ever be, first Snoheta would be the $850,000, though there may be less because we may be having some parallel contracts that Oregon City may hold on their own, if that makes sense.
Now, is Snoheta doing, this is, this is for LLC, or is this for the Riverwalk?
This is for, so this is for the development strategy. So Snoheta is the, the prime of the design collective, of the, of Dialogue, Mayor Reed, Snoheta. They are doing a majority of the development strategy work?
Of both projects.
Of both, so it's, so while, I think, think about the, the one graph, we have the grant agreement with Falls Legacy in Oregon City, which is how we work together, but Oregon City actually holds the contract. So this, and this is our personal service agreement with Snoheta. And then we have our separate agreement with Metro of how we're getting the grant money. So we have these three parallel agreements, but we, what, what I'm asking for is, as we move forward, there may be some determination of some of these final subs, and so what I'm asking is that the City Commission give approval for the, for the full extent that Snoheta would ever have of the contract, of the $900,000.
For both projects, the Riverwalk and?
No, for, for just the development strategy.
Just development strategy, not the Riverwalk.
Correct, the Riverwalk is contracted directly with Metro.
Okay, got it, got it.
But because of Snoheta's experience with Metro, it makes sense to also bring him in with the development strategy as well.
Sure.
And there was a memo by Mr. Kobayashi about how we were able to use Metro's RFP process, and this is really an extension of that, but we're holding the contract.
Okay.
So you're asking for flexibility because you don't yet know who some of the subs are?
Correct, and we don't know, if we don't know Falls Legacy is going to hold some of the contracts, and we don't know if necessarily, like for the public implementation plan, we may contract out through RFP, or it may be a sub, Snoheta.
But the ask of the city is the same.
Still $25,000.
Right, so that doesn't change.
Correct. I just, by doing it to this full extent, I don't have to come back to you and ask for an extension.
And the planning ahead of time is good, that's a good...
So that was a convoluted answer, but...
It sounds like a project I'm working on right now, there's, you know, $25,000, it could be $850, you know?
You're only $25,000.
It won't be $25,000.
There's your $25,000 container, you know? Okay, thanks, Christine.
Vote to approve PC 16-045 Personal Service Agreement, Agreement with Snoheta.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Polly, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye. Okay, so, next one, PC 16-043, Lamont Falls Legacy Project Revised Governance, Intergovernmental Agreement Among the State of Oregon through the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department, Clackamas County, Metro, and the City of Oregon City. Mr. Conkle?
This would be the fourth of the approvals we're asking for tonight, you'd, actually had already approved this in January, once the state looked at it, they had some minor changes that do not impact what we had originally agreed to with the IGA, there were clarifications and word cleanup, so we are recommending and requesting approval of this IGA once again.
I move to approve.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Commissioner Smith, call the roll, please.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeberg? Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, I would like to thank Christina for all the hard work that went into putting these agreements together, as well as our partners at Metro and Clackamas County at the state, trying to get all this lined up with the amount of contracting for one project alone would be, have our hands full with two of them. There's just a lot of moving parts, so we appreciate the flexibility on, on the contracting. And I think that the relationship that we have with our partners, and with this, at the staff, at the working level, and the amount of effort that's gone into building those relationships, has made these, these difficult contracts and discussions and scopes of work and RFP processes something that we've been able to accomplish, which I think has been very successful. So, and I appreciate the leadership of the Commission as well as the other organizations.
Thanks, Christina, for taking over this project, you know, and your fellow over here kind of stepped down. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, now we're down to, no, sixteen-two-two-three Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Gladstone and Oregon City for Rights of Way and Geographical Information Systems Management. Ms. Lewis?
I'm going to go ahead and give this, this presentation, as it kind of expanded a little bit. So, we, we were approached by the City of Gladstone to discuss some of the programs that we have in place right now, and what options we could potentially afford them to help them implement some of them. And the two that we focused on initially, that would both be, that would be the easiest to implement with the, with the progress we've made with our programs and the staffing levels that we had available, were working with Gladstone to implement a right-of-way program, similar to the one that we've been able to successfully implement here in Oregon City, as well as some assistance with their geographic information systems, so their mapping systems over in Gladstone, to assist with not only getting their available information into a usable mapping system, but to assist with that right-of-way process, if they so choose, to move that forward once we provide the information for them. So we've, we're proposing tonight and requesting approval for an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone to provide those two services at this point. Through the IGA, essentially, what we're requesting is for you to authorize me to finalize and sign the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Gladstone. What was attached to the Commission report was a draft outlining the basic services. We would go back in and fill in such things that you may have noticed weren't in there, our total hourly rates, and whatnot weren't in there. We would be providing that, and then, and then I would be agreeing, entering that agreement with Gladstone, their city administrator, Eric Swanson. We're comfortable that we can, that we can provide these services with the staffing levels that we have and the capacity that we have available to us, and that we believe that we can provide these services to them at a better rate and with more responsiveness than if they were to go out and, and try to consult these services. So we are comfortable that we can provide these and recapture our costs, plus a little extra for the, the impact to, to our, to our system and our city. So we are requesting approval for me to, for the city manager to have the authority to finalize and enter into this agreement with Gladstone.
So, I, I only have one issue with that. I, I think that once you've negotiated the agreement, that it needs to come back to us so we can see it, so we can see the filled-in blanks, just as a, you know, it's our, our duty to, you know, make sure that we're looking at that stuff before it gets signed. So that's the only thing I would ask it. You know, certainly would authorize you to take care of, but I think we need to see it first.
So maybe we can, I'd be happy to answer any, any additional questions. Maybe we can table this, and we can bring it back once we have it finalized.
Move to continue sixteen-two-four-one?
Two-two-three.
Or, two-two-three, excuse me, sixteen-two-two-three.
Second.
Further discussion? Is that going to cause a problem?
No, there are commissions voting on it tonight. So the, the, the agreement that got put in the package was draft because of the deadline, and then we've made quite a bit, we've made lots of progress on it. So, we, we chose not to stick it back in there again for tonight's meeting. We could have brought you a hard copy of that, but it was, it was really based on some dollar values for really a few positions. So, I think we basically came up with a total cost of compensation for the employees that would be doing the work, and then added fifteen percent over the, over and above that. That, that was the main change. So, it's not much different other than the dollar.
You mean, it's not going to affect the timing or anything else?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I have a problem signing something, or approving something that has blank spots in it.
Understood.
So, I'd rather see it there. So, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Okay. I don't see Mo here.
Sorry, give me.
Mo's in band, so...
So sixteen-two-four-one Furniture and Shelving Purchase for the Library Expansion. I assume, Mr. Conklin, you're going to do this?
Yes, sir. We are requesting approval for expenditures for shelving and furniture. The amounts are, are in the staff report, a hundred-and-ninety thousand for furniture in Phase One, additionally eighty-three, a little over eighty-three thousand in Phase Two, shelving in the amount of approximately eighty-three thousand in Phase One, and a little over thirty-two thousand in Phase Two, from Workplace Resource of Oregon. Three bids were received. They are proposing, because of the timing of the construction that's happening over at the library, the furniture and the shelving will be brought in in phases to match the construction process and the progress that they're being made over there. And this was in the total budget that was approved, and falls within the parameters of that approved budget for the library construction. So we are requesting approval to make these purchases.
But it's outside the CMGC contract?
It is. It's with Workforce, Workplace Resource of Oregon, so it's a separate contract.
Discussion?
I'll move to approve sixteen-two-four-one.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Shaw, seconded by Commissioner Smith. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
Anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Nope.
Okay, then I would entertain a motion.
We have to approve.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Polly, seconded by Mr. Smith. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Shaw?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Polly?
Aye.
Commissioner Mengeleberg?
Aye.
Mayor Holliday?
Aye.
So, now we're down to communications. Mr. Manager?
I'll start with an update from Mr. Archer.
Mayor and Commission, just, this is a reminder to you, since the, the voters' pamphlets are going to be, I think, distributed in, in the pretty near future, that we have a park ballot measure on the, on the upcoming May seventeenth election.
The voters' pamphlets are out.
Okay.
Just got it today.
There you go. I haven't been home and gotten my mail yet. As I said, they're going to be distributed very, very soon. And just as a reminder, ballot measure three dash four-seven-nine is the, is the ballot number for our Wesleyland Park-related measure. I'm not going to go through all the details, I'm just reminding you that that was on there, and for the public that may be listening. This is the measure that would allow a property owner, if, if it was approved, it would allow a property owner adjacent to the northwest end of Wesleyland Park permission to build a new public road and a stormwater underground pipe in park property. This, the adjacent developer requested that the city consider this, and that was presented. We went through the process with you, and the Commission approved sending that to the voter, to the vote on May seventeenth. So again, just a reminder simply that that's in there. There's a full explanatory statement that the city wrote with, with Mr. Kabeizman's assistance, and that's all very well explained in there. But if you had any other questions, again, we've already reviewed all the details, but just simply a reminder that that's on there.
Anything else you'd care to share?
Would you like me to?
Well, since, since, since some, some folks have, but not everybody has, has heard, and...
Sure. Sure. Well, I think what you're getting at is that I have decided to offer my resignation to the city effective mid-May to accept a, a new professional opportunity. I'll be the, the Director of the North Clackamas Park and Recreation District, and so I have given the city about a month notice, so I'll be here for a little while yet. This is not my last commission meeting with you. I think I've got a study session and a regular meeting yet to come, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to harass me or give me a bad time, whatever you'd like to do. So, and, and I think we'll have the opportunity to talk about that more. I don't want to go on about that right now, but, yeah, it was a bittersweet decision, because I've, I've, I very much care about this community, this city, all the people that I work with. We have a great Commission right now, and a great city manager and management team. So I'm just, it's a bittersweet decision for me, but it was just the right professional opportunity, so...
Thank you.
Thanks for putting me on the spot about that, Mr....
Well, I wanted the people in the public to have the opportunity to, you know, say their things to you that they need to say as well.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Conklin?
Just a reminder that our day celebration is Saturday, April twenty-third, Clackamas Park. Registration starts at eight-thirty a.m., and then we'll be having some events from nine o'clock to twelve, so hopefully folks can come out and help us with some of the cleanup efforts that will be, and projects that we'll have going on around Oregon City on that morning.
That's the twenty-eighth?
Third, this Saturday, twenty-third.
What are some of the projects they'll be taking on this year?
The, we'll be working on Seventh Street cleanup.
No.
I think they're working down near Washington and Seventeenth, that, that stream corridor that our past mayor typically looks at, the Park Place neighborhood usually looks at their entry. I think there's five different sites, I don't recall them all, but, yeah.
So, I will be unable to attend. I have a prior engagement.
Okay.
Just a reminder, there was a, Councilor Klett brought up the Affordable Housing Grant opportunities. So we will be coming back to you at your May work session. There'll be a joint work session with the Planning Commission. We'll be discussing marijuana regulations as well as affordable housing. So just wanted to make you aware that that is on the calendar, and we are working on putting that together for, you know, to begin the conversation, and explaining what Oregon City's current regulations are in place as they relate to affordable housing, as well as additional data and recent legislation that was passed, and, and then see where we go from there. And lastly, we've got a presentation from Mr. Kabeizman here, and some court cases as it relates to public meetings that we'd like to provide an update to the Commission on, and let you ask any questions about for clarification.
So, this has to do with meetings of quorums and discussions among commissioners, and kind of give you an update of the latest court cases, where things are, and try to clarify things, and tell you that as typical, you know, part of the issue that we have is that this law was generally written in the seventies, and didn't anticipate things like this, and, you know, there, there are some holes that have developed over the years, but hopefully give you some, some more guidance and answer questions you might have about it. But, you know, the basic policy when we do have public meetings is set in statute, and the legislature said, you know, the, the Oregon form of government requires an informed public aware of the deliberations and the decisions of governing bodies, and the information upon which decisions were made, and it's the intent of the legislature that these decisions be made, or be arrived at openly. And that policy, part of the way it's implemented is by a prohibition that says, "A quorum of a governing body may not meet in private for the purpose of deciding on or deliberating towards a decision on a matter." So, you know, the, the easy, some cases are easy. If all three of you get together in the back room and say, you know, this Lamptown Falls thing's, it's over, and we're not going to approve this stuff, you know, that, that you can't do. But there are a variety of different topics that have come up recently, in, in particular, the idea of serial meetings, you know, where somebody comes in and talks, talks to one commissioner, and then another commissioner, or two commissioners get together, and then one of those gets together with a third. And it really came up with the case of Handy versus Lane County, a Court of Appeals decision from a few months ago. It's currently on appeal at the Supreme Court. They're going to hear our arguments in May, so a year from now, I may be telling you something completely different, but right now, I'll try and give you the, the best information we have. So, just kind of a quick background on the Handy case. Rob Handy was a Lane County Commissioner. He was running for reelection, and was in debt to the county for previous litigation involving another public meeting law we won't get into. And essentially, he sent a letter out to somebody saying, "Help me pay off my debt to the county, and if you do it, it'll be anonymous and confidential." The guy who got the letter went to the county and said, "This isn't right. Can you really do this?" And then that person's lawyer sent a letter to the county saying, "You, you can't do this." And press got ahold of it, and sent to, basically requested the county, "Hey, we hear that you've got this letter, we want to see it." And that kind of set wheels in motion. The county administrator got ahold of it, and had a series of communications with three of the five county commissioners, not including Mr. Handy, not including somebody else, what they were called the Agenda Team, and said, you know, "What are we going to do about The, the county scheduled an emergency meeting for the next day to discuss a public records request, and decided to release the, the letter. Commissioner Handy sued the county, saying that you, these communications violate the public records laws, and there's a number of discussions I want to touch on. One thing is important, it's very early in the litigation, so as a result, what they had to do was accept all the facts asserted by the plaintiff as true, and sort of give every benefit of the doubt to the plaintiff. So, that meant that, you know, there, they make some allegations that may not quite add up when you get to actually what happened, but based on the facts in, in the, in the complaint. And essentially, the circuit court agreed, so what happened was the county said, "Hey, this is, you shouldn't hear it, move to dismiss it." The circuit court agreed. Court of Appeals got it and reversed on part and affirmed on some. They noted the, the early stage. So, first thing Mr. Handy complained about was, the Agenda Team got together and talked about the agenda, you know, what's on the schedule, you know, let's schedule a emergency meeting, and he said that was a violation of the public meetings law. Court of Appeals disagreed and said that any discussion about scheduling the meeting was fine. That's not really a decision, because the county administrator or the county board chair had the ability to, to sign it. It's sort of procedural-type stuff, you can talk about that, you know, unless it's a decision that's required to be made by the Commission. So it's like, should we have a, a meeting, you know, move the retreat from this day to another day? That all, that kind of communication, it should be fine. The bigger thing was, was there any discussion about what to do as far as releasing the letter? Because that was really a decision that was before the, the Commission, and Mr. Handy said, "You guys made this decision before you even got to that meeting, and that was in secret." And so the court started with a previous case, something called Harris versus Norquist, and what it says is that, "A quorum got, the quorum of a governing body may violate the law by deliberating privately in an informal setting, but also that not every discussion among a quorum, even on matters of public concern, will violate the statute. Rather, the discussion must rise to the level of, and have the purpose of deciding on or deliberating towards a decision." It sort of, sort of draw a distinction between information gathering and deliberating on decision. So, you know, I'm trying to think of, you know, the, the city's comprehensive plan, let's say you're running through an adoption, and you say, "Did you hear what, you know, Joe Smith is saying about the Kenema area and what should happen there? No, what is it? Well, he said blah, blah, blah." You know, that's, you know, could be information gathering, but if, you know, the Commission, the Commission who got that responded with a, "Well, that's, that's, doesn't make any sense. I really think that's not the way to go. We really ought to do this." We really ought to do this." Then you start heading towards deliberation. And, you know, it's a fine line and the court recognized that. And, you know, what they said is that, you know, a violation contemplates something more than just a contemporaneous gathering of a quorum. A series of discussions may rise to a level of prohibited deliberation or decision. Let's see. You know, the gathering of a quorum is lawful as long as it's social, even if members discuss matters of concern, but may instantly become unlawful if the discussion takes on a character that with judicial hindsight appears deliberative in purpose. So that's where it's muddy, you know. It's going to, the decision is going to be made by a court sometime later. And, you know, that's, there is no bright line. There's a dissent in this case that tried to set a bright line and that position lost. It may win at the Supreme Court, but right now, there's no way to tell in advance that, you know, you have now crossed the line. It's really heavy move from information gathering to deliberation. The other key piece of this decision was really about, you know, the serial meetings. And, you know, the dissent really focused on, you've got to have three people in the room at the same time as part of the discussion. And that wasn't what won the day. The court said, "No, you can have serial meetings. The determinative factors are whether sufficient numbers of officials are involved, what they discuss and the purpose for which they discuss it, not the time, place, or manner of their communication. In the absence of explicit textual historical support for the notion that the Oregon Legislature intended to apply only where a quorum is contemporaneously present, makes little sense to engraft such a rigid criterion onto the statute." You know, and...
What did you just say?
Basically, sorry, what that is, is three people don't have to be in the room at the same time.
Okay.
If three people are involved in a discussion, whether text messages, whether Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Smith meet and then Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Polly meet and the three of you essentially deliberate towards a decision, you've got a problem. Now, Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Smith can get together and talk about this and even deliberate towards a decision, but as soon as they bring that third person in, you've got a problem.
Can you describe deliberate toward a decision?
Um, you know, they talk about that a little bit. Let me, you know, grab this and talk about what deliberation is, because they, the finance, it's going to take me a second here to actually find that language. And it's... I'm not certain that I can, I'm going to be able to find it real quickly, but the...
Why don't you just kick it out to us in email?
Yeah, I can do that. But the critical question is, information gathering and then deliberating toward a decision is, are you making progress towards making that decision? Is your mind being changed or are you coming to a conclusion about what the city should do?
So it's okay to share information like, hey, I saw a great report that talked about this issue. Here's a link to that report. That's okay, but I don't like this. I think I'm going to vote no. That's crossing the line.
Yeah, that's, you know, and I can also imagine a situation where the, here's a link to a report, maybe, you know, an attempt to sway somebody and, you know, could head towards deliberation, you know. And there's no clear line that says that. I think if, for example, if you're early on and you really are just sharing information, you know, that makes sense. But if it's sort of, you know, it's clear that what you're trying to do with that sharing is to advocate for a particular position, then you may have a problem. And I really can't give you a definitive, if you just share information, you're going to be okay.
So the proper way to handle that then would be say, Tony, here's a great report. I think it might be helpful to the rest of the commission. Could you send that out to the whole commission?
Yeah, that would probably be a better way to handle it. That way it doesn't look like an attempt to sort of, you know, affect the decision in some way.
Is that it?
That's, that's pretty much it, you know. I'm, it's, you know, happy to answer questions because I know this comes up all the time, but, you know, wanted to at least give you some parameters of what we're talking about.
I think this comes another category of no good deed goes unpunished.
John and I went to a presentation on this with much more extensive detail, but basically it has a very chilling effect on any conversation we can have amongst each other. And it's pretty broad brush, so it's not a minor thing.
Right. Yeah.
You know, it is clear you can meet and talk of concerns, but you're not going to know in advance when you cross that line.
So we're just walking around on minefield?
Yeah. Supreme Court gets first chance. Every year, it seems like there's an attempt to revise this law and every year, nothing happens for a variety of different reasons because people want to change it in different ways and they can't ever quite come to a, something that works.
Anything else? That concludes my reports for today. Okay. From the commission?
A little bit. I sat in on the planning transportation or TAC workshop a little bit the other night and John Riplinger, I think that his name was, was there, he's the consultant, was talking about transportation stuff, I believe, because Pints from the Past was going on, so I had to go to that.
Well, good to see your furries.
Yeah. Had to learn about the lock. Also, the library, I think everybody was there for the tour. And just a little progress from that, when we were there, they're going to start backfilling the Jefferson Street side here this week. And also, they're painting the second floor, start painting on Friday, the second floor. So that's pretty cool.
That's the update, Mo.
She charged me with giving the update.
Where's the slideshow?
I know. Forgot that, yeah. And then they're going to start painting the second floor, actually, next, oh, the first floor, they'll start painting it next Friday. So that's the progress we're making here, so. And I had an issue that I think maybe Chief Band could assist here on is, and maybe, I don't know, it's something we can address here, but there seems to be a lot...
Do you need a lawyer?
Yes.
You have the right to make...
There's a lot of people listening right now and you're telling me you should.
I got a couple of them, you're telling me.
It could possibly go wrong.
Yeah.
I was going to say depend.
So this is, but I'm worried about Twelfth and Washington.
Yes.
We've had, what, two wrecks here this week? One with a school bus. So what are you, what are we thinking? Is this the little item we need to, what's the, what's the story with that? What do you think?
You can't fix stupid.
Was there, was there a flashing light there or no?
There's, there's the...
Twelfth and Washington?
It's, it's...
It's the pedestrian activated flashing light.
Right. But there's not, there wasn't ever a flashing red there.
Not that I know of.
I mean, there's...
That's it, yeah. I think you could go to a four-way stop or something, there's, it's just getting crazy.
This has come up before and it's more of a John...
Flashing yellow. That's what I thought, but I don't remember.
It has come up on our list of dangerous intersections. It's in the top five, I believe. But I, we talked about this before because there's a couple of things that happen. One, people who are coming up the hill on Twelfth making a right, there's a lot of crashes for people who are coming up the hill. And then there's some issues we've had, and we had a fatality with a pedestrian a year and a half ago. The crosswalk is better, but I do not believe, because people have asked before, why don't we have a light there? And I don't think, if I remember right from the way that the traffic engineers look at it, it does not fit a criteria for a good light.
Doesn't meet the warrants for signalization, not yet. Well, back in the day, when I was growing up in high school, that was a, it was a flashing red on Twelfth and a flashing yellow going up and downhill on Washington.
That's what I thought, too.
Do you know? I'm not sure of these latest...
I know on Sunday...
I thought it was.
No, one was, when I went through there, there was a car that actually took out a pole.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering if it came down.
And then the next day was on the school bus.
Yeah, yesterday was the school bus.
I don't know what happened with that, but, you know, it's just...
Car and pole. Sounds like maybe there was something else involved.
I thought there was a light and it got knocked down in the first crash.
Yeah, see, that's what I'm wondering, if there was a light that came down and then the next, the other accident was yesterday after that.
I mean, the biggest problem with that intersection is the topography. It's not necessarily, you know, the fact that it has signals needed there, it's more of the topography and then the downhill traffic moves very fast.
Yeah.
So there's some blind spots.
Well, it's, again, it's a speed issue and we have that all over the city. And at, you know, some point in time, I don't know if it's, you know, going to come down to the advisory committee, but speed bumps or some more traffic calming devices, I mean, there are, there are some major issues up and down Lynn.
Yeah, and I can speak to one thing. So I've talked about traffic team a little bit. We have, you approved, it was about a year ago now or close to that, an additional traffic position. So the training process takes place and we end up hiring somebody and they're, eventually they get through the academy. And that position right now is soon going to be done with training. And as soon as that happens, we put them out into the position of a more senior officer who's going to end up in a traffic position. I think we literally last week identified who that position's going to be. So that gives us two full-time traffic people and one half-time traffic officer that we have. And we're doing some number crunching between Wyatt and I and our staff, trying to figure out if we can add another body right now. More to come on that. The reason that we have not had a traffic team up until now, we used to have one years ago, but as the city grew and crime grew, we had to just have every body, building body, building staffing, so we had enough people to just respond to 911 calls. And then traffic was an ancillary thing. And through a lot of conversations with the TAC and just listening to what people heard in their communities, it is, it is very obvious that having officers responding to 911 calls and grabbing citations where they can is not targeted specific traffic enforcement like we need because issues like this. It has gotten a lot better just with our retired OSP chief, but that everyone's met, everyone knows it's him because he's got white hair and he's pulling a lot of people over.
He has an incognito car.
Yeah, so I, the whole goal, the reason we've been slowly moving toward this is to do exactly what you're saying, because you're right. It's not, it's not about blanket enforcement, it's about targeted enforcement in certain areas. Fifth, we've had people coming in here with concerns about Fifth up to Lynn Avenue, Washington, High Street Center. So it, it's something that is going to get a lot better in that way. There's education stuff that we're doing with, Public Works is doing, we're doing. So we're, we're getting there on that kind of stuff.
Who owns the, those remote signs, the speed signs, the changing ones, you know? Are they owned by you or by him?
We have a little of both. Jim's got a trailer. We just purchased a trailer.
No, but you moved the stick signs around though, right?
Those are ours.
So the one on Division Street by the hospital is malfunctioning.
Okay.
Its little display doesn't work properly.
Okay.
It might have gotten affected by the gas leak up there last week, so.
Probably not. Probably not, yeah. Okay, so where were we? Was that you, Mr. Shaw?
That's it. Thanks, Jim.
Mr. Smith?
Just the library tour, which was amazing, great.
Okay. Commissioner Mengeberg? Polly?
A couple of things. Yeah, the library tour was great. The Friends of Library are going to be touring the library here, I think it's in a couple of weeks, so that'll be neat. We'll be able to see the new paint. Main Street has been busy as usual. We had a volunteer open house, our regular meeting, our exec meeting, and then we also had a retreat on Sunday. And we had Michelle Reeves come as a consultant. So Main Street is just, you know, moving forward, trying to work with the partners and keep the legacy project in mind and see what we can do to help increasing their, their membership. And the committee structure is doing really well and lots of projects going on, lots of projects and events. And then the Willamette Falls Working Group was earlier today and that's going well. There's also a state task force that the mayor's on, but we still have the working group functioning as well. And we are looking at who might own the locks, the operation and the funding and just, it might, there's so many different possibilities. There could be many different variations on. So we're just kind of looking at different scenarios and different options and something that will be lasting. And tomorrow morning, there is a Willamette Falls Heritage Area Coalition meeting and they have been talking about partnering with the moot in some way. So just partnership seems to be a common theme lately and it's a good thing.
Okay. I had actually a pretty light couple of weeks. About the only real thing that, beyond going to the library tour and the other things is we did have a meeting with a group of folks who were talking about a, some kind of a Whitewater River Park thing as part of the Willamette Falls Legacy Project. And we spent some time with them and then had them submit their information to the Design Collective so that that could be evaluated along with everything else. So, you know, in twelve or eighteen months, we'll find out what comes out of that, that Design Collective. I did want to say that I'm excited about our collaboration with Gladstone. For a long time, Oregon City and Gladstone have been neighbors, but haven't really, you know, been communicating across the river and having good conversations. And we are now doing that and it is, it is resulting in some pretty positive things for both of our cities. So I'm excited about that. And there was one other thing, but it slipped my mind apparently, so. Oh, I know what it was. I wanted to thank John Lewis and his crew for bringing all their stuff down here and giving people tours, showing them all the different stuff their rigs do, so thank you that. Mr. Lewis? Anything else to give your...
I thought there would have been cake, you know, full of Public Works.
There are cupcakes.
Well, I know, but...